Is it seven o'clock? Did you hear, is it seven o'clock?
I think it's six.
Six, yeah.
It's six o'clock.
All right.
Okay.
You know. Oh, he's on.
Welcome, everyone. We're gonna... Good evening and welcome to the 2025 North Shore Council PTSA School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Grace Hurado and I am North Shore Council PTSA's president. To my right are the co-VPs of advocacy Stephanie Sullivan and Brene Bricks. Tonight's event is based on the format and practices of the past PTSA candidate forums and is an opportunity for our community to hear from the candidates and learn about their ideas, priorities, and vision for North Shore. Thank you all for attending this evening. Please silence your cell phones and if you need to take a call, please do so outside. We would like to inform you that this event is being recorded and will be available for viewing on North Shore Council PTSA's website along with voter and candidate information. There are handouts available with a QR code to access this information. We would like to thank the Washington State PTA, the North Shore School District, the League of Women Voters, and our community members for your partnership. We especially appreciate the large number of community responses to our candidate forum questionnaire which generated tonight's questions. And a special thanks to our candidates. Carson Sanderson, candidate for director District One. Sandy Hayes, candidate for Director District Four. Kimberly Kelly, candidate for Director District Five. We also want to inform you that Linda Schramm, candidate for District Director Five, and Joanne Tolentino, candidate for Director District Four, cannot be here this evening. And Arun Sharma, candidate for Director District One, is not here tonight. He has not contacted us about his candidacy and his campaign website is still active. However, he has posted on social media that he has suspended his campaign.
Can you go to the next slide, please? Okay. Please stand if you're able and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next slide, please. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional tribal lands of the Coast Salish people, in particular the Tulela, Duwamish, Snohomish, Stilagwamish, and Sauk-Suado tribes, past, present, and future. With gratitude and respect, we honor the land itself and we acknowledge the histories, stories, cultures, and the elders and people of the Coast Salish tribes. We see you, respect your right to sovereignty and self-determination, and are committed to being better listeners, learners, and lifting Indigenous voices.
North Shore Council PTSA does not support or oppose any candidate appointed or elected for public office. This event is to assist the community in making an informed judgment in the election of the school board. We would like to... Next slide. We would like to remind the audience here that our meetings follow the Code of Conduct that expects everyone to be civil, cordial, and relevant when speaking. We also do not allow remarks that endorse or disapprove of a candidate or political party. You can review our full social media policy by visiting the About Us section of our website. Next slide, please. Tonight, we will be hearing from the candidates for school board position one, four, and five. The North Shore School Board is made up of five board members who are elected at large for four-year terms on a staggered basis. The board is a policymaking body for the district and makes decisions regarding the school district priorities, policies, personnel, textbooks, expenditures, and growth management. The board adopts the annual budget and also proposes levy and bond issues for community consideration. We are very grateful to have Paula Barnes, from the Legal Women Voters here tonight, to help facilitate and moderate this event. Please welcome Paula.
Good evening. Thanks to the North Shore Council PTSA for inviting me to moderate tonight's forum. One of my favorite league activities is moderating forums such as this one, so I'm very grateful to be with you tonight. Let me just say a word about the League of Women Voters. The League is a national, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization whose purpose is to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Our goal for candidate forums is to provide citizens with the information to help you be informed and knowledgeable voters. You can find more information about the League by going to the Seattle King County League of Women Voters website. It's L W V S K C dot org. So, the ground rules that we'll be observing during tonight's forum have already been mentioned. I'll just remind you, because we need to be wrapped up by 7:30 PM, please refrain from applause, cheers, booing, any other disruptions, so we can keep things moving and we'll have time at the end of the forum for a round of applause. So here's how things will run. Seated below, hold up one of your signs there, Abby, are Abby Pulasco, North Shore Council's treasurer, and Liz Wong, the council secretary. They're our timekeepers for tonight. I have not worked with them before, but I have heard that they are ruthless. They will raise cards to warn our speakers when their time is almost up. Green indicates there's 30 seconds left, yellow means there's 10 seconds left, and red means stop. And I'll be the enforcer, if necessary. I'll kick things off by asking each candidate to make an opening statement of no more than three minutes, and we'll go in order of position and, let's see, we don't have two people for any position, so we'll just go in order of position. We'll follow the opening remarks with a Q&amp;A session consisting of questions that were solicited from you, the community. The North Shore Council PTSA's forum committee used their best discretion to combine similar topics and ask the most frequently mentioned questions. All questions were provided to all the candidates a couple of days ago. The candidates will have up to two minutes to answer each question. To keep things as fair as possible, with each question, I'll rotate who goes first, but they'll continue to answer in the same order. We encourage the candidates to be as brief as possible, so we can get to as many questions as we can. In other words, I guess what I'm saying, candidates, is don't feel obligated to use up your whole two minutes. And we'll end tonight's forum by giving each candidate up to three minutes for closing remarks, and this will happen in the reverse order of position. So now, on to the opening statements. We've asked the candidates to introduce themselves by covering the following information in their three minutes or less opening statement. What motivated you to run for school board director? What qualifications set you apart from the other candidates? And what is your connection to the North Shore community? So candidates, please keep your eye on the timer, so you can gauge your time, and we will start with Ms. Sanderson. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Welcome tonight, guys. Thank you for coming and to learn more about us. My name is Carson Sanderson. I am the multiracial mother of four students in the North Shore School District, one who graduated in 2024 and is now a college sophomore in Montana. I have a senior and a sophomore at North Creek High School and a seventh grader at Skyview Middle School. Over the last 20 years, I've been deeply involved in their education, from a dozen years in co-op preschool on, and I have volunteered in classrooms and libraries and school offices. I have worked as a test proctor over the last several years. I have, for the district. I've been a Girl Scout leader for eight years. And I've also been a member of the High Cap Parents Council and was president over the last two. I have spent a lot of time learning about education by going to, being part of all of their PTAs and serving on some of the boards as well. And so I have a depth of knowledge from this district as well as two other districts that my oldest attended and my second attended, one of them, prior to our coming to North Shore in 2014. The qualities that set me apart most are the fact that I actually have secondary students currently in the district, so I hear from them, I hear from their friends, I hear from my Girl Scouts who are also in that age range, so I know a lot about what is currently going on within the schools and from a student perspective as well. As far as why I wanted to run, sometimes you have goals for yourself and sometimes other people suggest goals to you. This was a suggest goals to you. I had the opportunity of meeting with a friend of mine from high school over the summer in 2023, 24, and we had a long conversation. And I was telling him about all of the stuff that I had done with my kids and for the schools over time, and he looked at me and said, "You need to run for school board and I will come and be your campaign manager." Now, he's a very busy CEO of the Toronto Symphony, so I was sure there was no campaign manager in the offing, but when he said that, I said, "No, you're crazy. That is not a thing that I'm planning on doing." Come to March, I got a Facebook message saying, "Some people have told me you'd be a good candidate," which seemed interesting, but also still not something I was sure I wanted to do. A week later, I was in Ohio trying to help with my dad, who was in the hospital, and a week after that, he had died. And as I was thinking about the sorts of things that I wanted to share in a eulogy, I thought about the legacy of the things that he did in working with my particular student interests and also working for schools and passing levies. And so I decided that I wanted this to be part of the legacy that I show for my kids of how we act and work for the community. And also, it didn't hurt to have a senior and think about being on the stage when he graduated.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move to Ms. Hayes, and I'll just remind you that you've been asked to talk to us about what motivated you to run for school board director, what qualifications set you apart from the other candidates, and what is your connection to the North Shore community? You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. So I am Sandy Hayes, and I'm realizing I know every person in the room, but I will introduce myself anyways. Serving on the North Shore School Board for the last 16 years has been the greatest honor for me. I signed up for another term when I realized that come December, we would have had five board members in their first term and a brand-new superintendent. So I'm here to just be the old person in the room and help people bring everyone on board. I still love the work and I look forward to getting to continue to do it. What differentiates me, I'm the only sitting school board candidate in the race. I have also served in our state school board association. I am a consultant with other school boards. I've served on numerous committees and have just recently completed my term as president of the state school board association, so lots of expertise around this work and best practices. And what connects me to North Shore, I'm gonna see if I can do this all in the last two minutes here, but every week for the last 20 years, I have volunteered in an elementary, a middle school, and a high school classroom. I belong to four different PTAs and I am the legislative rep for three of them. I work with the North Shore Schools Foundation. I started the Middle School Career Day and still help at one of the middle schools with theirs. During the pandemic, I started a book drive to deliver books to students in North Shore. We are still delivering books, getting books into students' hands, and five years later, we have distributed almost 27,000 books. That's what I could remember this afternoon. I'm sure I've forgotten something, but we'll leave it there.
Very good. Thank you very much. Ms. Kelly, just a reminder, what motivated you to run for school board director? What qualifications set you apart from the other candidates? And what is your connection to the North Shore community? You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kimberly Kelly. I am a veteran teacher. I am a mother. The small voice you hear in the room is my son, Miles. And I have served in different roles within education over the past 20 years. I started at the Boys and Girls Club as the teen director, and by college, I was working in early care and education at UCLA. And somewhere in between there, I had my first election where I was elected president of the Student Body Council at my college and served on school board there as a student trustee. After joining Teach for America, I taught in urban schools in Watts and South Central for 10 years, middle school and high school, mostly social studies, but also English. So that gives you a little bit of a background on my teaching foray, which is heavily influenced by history and facts. The reason that I decided to run is because I have a small child who will soon be entering North Shore School District, and I noticed that there were three seats open, and I wanted to make sure that those three seats were filled by people who believed in our students' constitutional right to the First Amendment, which means they have access to books. I wanted to make sure that I was participating in a school board that was for protecting students' rights to access those books, that saw teachers as experts on their curriculum, and that also cared deeply about what parents had to say as someone who was also a parent of an incoming child. I have a master's degree in education focusing on social justice and urban education, which is a fancy way of saying that I was taught to make sure that all students, all learners, are being supported, no matter their language, their background, or their ability. And I deeply believe that, and that is another reason why I wanted to serve on the school board. I actually, I didn't know I was gonna get to this point when I put my name down. This is the first time I've ever run a campaign, and I just thought I was running as a, in the background, as a just-in-case. So the fact that I am all the way here is quite surprising, even to me. I know that I have the background to do it, but you never, you never think people are gonna pick you until they do, and then you're here. So thank you to everyone in this room who picked me. I appreciate you, and if I'm elected, I hope to do right by you and your kids.
Great. Thank you very much. Now we'll move to the question-and-answer period, and it looks like we'll have just about an hour before we move to closing statements, and we'll shoot for doing that around 7:15. So here's the first question. Candidates, you'll have two minutes to answer these questions. Here's the first one. Serving as a school board director is different from being a teacher, parent, or volunteer. How do you see this role differing from your past experiences? And how will you balance your personal perspective with the responsibility to represent the entire North Shore community? And this time, we'll start with Ms. Hayes, and you have two minutes.
Okay. Obviously, what a great, it is a great question. Obviously, I've already demonstrated, having done that for the last 16 years, but I love this question, and I really encourage the PTA to put it in your question vault and ask it every time, because it's so key. I have been very, very fortunate with the dozens of school board members that I've got to serve with over my 16 years, that almost every single one of them came in ready to go and serve all of the students, and that has been fantastic, because it is best practice that you're not a single-issue candidate or personalizing it and making sure. When I reach in the way back of my memory, when I came on, I had three students, one at Woodmore, one at North Shore, and one at Inglemore, and I had to work to make sure that when I was doing this work, that I was not acting on behalf of my student or a program that they were involved in, that I was focusing on all of the students in this district. I have, however, made a focus of mine to make sure that I am representing the students whose families don't have access to the system, so they can be heard. So I have deviated a bit from that all-district approach when I am working or with a student that I'm recognizing that their family doesn't understand the system and making sure that their needs are being represented.
Okay, great. Next, we'll move to Ms. Kelly. You have two minutes, same question.
Would you repeat?
I will. Serving as a school board director is different from being a teacher, parent, or volunteer. How do you see this role differing from your past experiences? And how will you balance your personal perspective with the responsibility to represent the entire North Shore community? You have two minutes.
Thank you. I think that's a tricky question that's really hard to answer, because having, having served on boards as either a teacher rep or a student rep and been a teacher and been a parent, I have worn many hats. I think the most important thing is to be open to communication. I think that I really value equity audits as a way to help keep perspective when we are trying to see what is the best thing to do for all students and not relying on just what we may think we see with our own eyes or hear with our own ears. I think that it's extremely important for us to have multiple opportunities for communication with our community. Some of those might be forums like this where people show up in person, some of those might be collecting that data online or through surveys, but also, like Sandy has done for many years, it's also going into classrooms and seeing what's happening, boots on the ground in those rooms, so we can make sure that we're supporting schools in any way we can. And I, I think it's an amazing thing that she's, she's done all these years. So...
Thank you. That's very kind.
Good thing we're not running against each other, or I'd be making sure you win. But, yeah, I think it's a hard question, right? Because I think all of us want to make sure that we are, you know, not making things too personal, and I hope to do that, and I think the best way to do that is to keep listening, keep talking, and keep putting kids at the center and also teachers, right? Having been a teacher, the best thing for kids is to make sure that we have teachers that want to stay in the classrooms with them.
Very good. And same question, Ms. Sanderson, you have two minutes.
So the biggest difference I see is that I get to speak with my own voice up until the point when the board makes a decision. And at that point, I am part of the whole, and we speak with one voice once the decision is made. And we work as a team, which is great. I also see that we need to work together to make sure that our goals and what we're working towards work in synergy, so that my thoughts or the thing that I really want to solve, if it's not going to work well with the things that we are focused on now, that's the kind of thing that I put in a parking lot, and remember, that's still important, but not today. I also think that, we also write more policies as opposed to like working with day-to-day interactions. We're not like hiring and firing teachers and that sort of thing. We just have one person who is our employee, the superintendent. So those are the things that I see that are very different. Also, the fact that it will be nigh on impossible for me to walk into a classroom or a school and not have weight behind my words. So to know that that is there and to speak carefully about what things come up. As far as not just using my own personal perspective or goals, we are very intertwined, and so whatever thread you pull on pulls on others. And I think it's really important to know that and to think about how pulling on one thread works and how it will affect other people. I think that we will succeed if we focus on helping those who are farthest from educational justice to succeed, because the benefits that they reap can be helpful to other students as well.
Great, very good. We'll move on to the next question, and Ms. Kelly, you're gonna be first, and you'll have two minutes. And here's the question. The students of North Shore were very engaged when we collected these questions. The most common theme was the current budget shortfall and how that affects their everyday lives. Students would like you to tell them what you will do to bring back smaller class sizes, music programs, middle school sports, and after-school activity buses. Ms. Kelly, you have two minutes.
It's so inspiring as a government teacher to hear that about our students. And the answer to that question, I think, is bigger than I can answer before being on the board, because I don't have all the answers to that, but I think that we need to leverage community partnerships as much as we can to try to close the gaps in our funding. I'm also very, very passionate about fully-funded schools, and I think there's a role for those of us that are in elected board positions to be lobbying at the state level to be closing those funding gaps. I can't remember the exact number, but there's something around, like, the top eight corporations in this nation all reside in Washington. Like, we have the money in our state to be funding our schools. We just don't have the systems in place to be doing it. So I think that is a place where we need to be focusing, and a lot of people in this room have been doing that work. In the short term, that means, you know, getting out into the community in the ways that we can. I don't think the board can directly lobby for a levy or any bonds, but I think that we may need to close gaps locally in whatever ways we can. And when we can't do that, when we're forced to cut, my, my thought is we need to, again, reach out to the community. What do our schools and our teachers and our students think are the things we need to prioritize? We need to make sure we're prioritizing the things that are student-facing as much as possible and making sure we're protecting things that often don't get protected, like the arts and other, you know, extracurriculars that often are seen as extras that I think are actually quite important to the whole kid, the whole student. Thank you.
All right. Next, Ms. Sanderson, same question. You have two minutes.
These are all really valuable programs and things that my kids, who are now mostly older, enjoyed when they were those ages, and it was really heartbreaking to see those things go away. But the bottom line is that we need more money to be able to bring these services back and to reduce classroom sizes. And to that end, I need to work hard to make sure that the community understands the reasons behind the amounts chosen for the levies and the bond, and work hard to make sure that our very kind and generous community wants to pass those measures, so that we have as much money available to us to be able to have the chance to bring these things back. We still need to hold the state accountable to their commitment to funding education, which we state is our paramount priority in the state, in the Constitution. And we also need to always be making sure that we're evaluating how we are spending the funds that we do have and using them to provide as many of the activities and shrink classroom sizes as we can, and also providing transportation so that students can equitably access them.
Okay, very good. Same question to you, Ms. Hayes. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I will confess, I'm trying to balance the I, we of my world, I as a candidate, we as a school board member, and we as my happy place, I as not. So I wrote, I have advocated, but really, I'm looking around the room, we advocated for an increase in funding. We got a little bit in this last legislative session, and we did also, we were successful in having the legislature increase the amount that we are allowed to collect in levy dollars. And so it is likely, because it hasn't been voted on yet by the board, but it is likely that there will be a levy in February that will be renewing our current existing levy that will have an opportunity for us to collect more dollars. It won't be enough to bring back everything, but we will definitely be prioritizing what our community has expressed as being of the most importance.
Okay, great. Next question, and we'll be starting with you, Ms. Sanderson, and it is, "There is a great disparity between North Shore's newer buildings, which are safe and accessible, and older facilities, which have structural and plumbing issues and many portable classrooms. Do you feel that the capital projects review process adequately addresses the current conditions of school facilities, and should the process be modified? If so, how?" So Ms. Sanderson, you have two minutes.
So as I currently understand the issues, the district works to touch every building at least every 20 years for more major renovations, and while the buildings met building code when they were completed, the codes are constantly being updated based on higher standards as we do better with new understanding and new methods. And we want that to be brought to our older buildings as well. I also appreciate how we have looked at the seismic safety of all school buildings and are working to incorporate updates to areas of weakness in the next bond cycle, likely, hopefully when it gets announced that that's in it. At the same time, and I also, also, we have, in our latest set of renovations over the last bond cycle, we have stated that we would remove the portable classrooms when the renovation was complete, which did not happen in the prior cycle, particularly with Canyon Creek, which had 10 and still has 10. So I feel like we are moving in the right direction. But I also know that there are problems, that when Kenmore was recently, Kenmore Elementary was recently renovated, they found mold, and that led to a lot of justifiable parent-staff concerns. I feel that we need to have more transparency in how we make our choices, so that it is easily understood by the community, and I also feel that we need to have a clear method for being able to report concerns about safety issues or building issues, much as we have them for safety concerns. about safety issues or building issues, much as we have them for safety concerns.
Same question to you, Ms. Hayes, you have two minutes.
Thank you. So in Washington State, we receive no money from the state to either build or maintain buildings. We are dependent on you, the taxpayers, to fund all of it. We run a bond every four years for both new buildings, new construction, and maintenance. That has been our practice in North Shore. The school board sets the parameters of the bond with the help from several committees. We have both an enrollment demographics task force committee and a Capitol Project's task force committee, and they are comprised of community members, staff, and students that advise us on what to put in those bonds. We have to look into a crystal ball when we're creating the parameters of the bond of what the community will support. We have way more need in our existing buildings and growth than what we think we can ask for the, from the community. Our bonds require 60% to pass in Washington State, and it's an all-or-nothing. So if it doesn't pass, it's not like we can get a percentage. You don't get to write in your ballot, I will only give you 30% of what you're asking, right? So we have to, and it cost us $100,000 to run a bond election. So we want to do it once, and we want to get it done right. And so it means we can't do everything, and we rely on our committees to help us. And with the escalating cost of everything, and 34 buildings, we can't do it all. It is likely we will be, again, we haven't voted on it yet, but it is likely we'll be running a bond in February that focuses on addressing schools in need of love as well as reducing portables.
Thank you. And Ms. Kelly, same question, two minutes.
Carson and Sandy have explained it very thoroughly, but my answer is quite similar to theirs in that, as I mentioned previously, the state funding really puts us in a hard position for how we do those repairs, and we must ask our generous community to support us in that. And as Sandy pointed out, the cost of that campaign is quite a lot, over $100,000. And if we overshoot by asking for too much, we get nothing. So that means that we have to be very thoughtful about our asks and make sure that our community supports the choices that we're making. To that end, I also think that, you know, Sanders' point, Carson Sanderson's point is quite apparent. As I've been talking to people in the community, a lot of people who are probably not in this room, because they're not the people that are attending these meetings or sitting on the committees, do not know how those decisions are being made. And there may be ways that we could be more transparent or more organized in disseminating that information in the ways that people are able to see and hear them. I know that the North Shore School District sends out mailers. I know that we put things up on websites, but those aren't always the places where people are getting their information these days. So I think that it could go a long way for us to be in communication with the community at large about why these decisions are being made and how, and getting feedback from them to make sure that we have all of the information when going forth to then ask the community for the money to make improvements to our schools so they can be more equitable across the district.
All right. Before we move on to the next question, are people in the back of the room able to hear Ms. Kelly okay? Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, maybe just a little bit closer, yeah. Okay, we're going to move to the next question, and we will be starting with you, Ms. Hayes. And here's the next question. "North Shore serves a diverse student population. How would you ensure district policies and initiatives respect, reflect, and support students of all racial, cultural, linguistic, and socioeconomic backgrounds and identities?" You have two minutes to tackle that one.
Thank you. It starts with the board, our leadership. We need to talk and interact with our students and our staff and our community, all of them, with respect and dignity. We cannot be demonizing them or calling them dangerous on social media. We can't talk disparagingly from the dais or when we're in public. I have learned that modeling the behavior that we expect of our students and of our community is much more effective than demanding it. So I will continue to treat everyone with respect and kindness.
All right, very good. And next, Ms. Kelly, you have two minutes, same question.
I agree with all that. The first time I attended a board meeting, when I saw the way that the current board interacts with each other, I just, I was so happy to see that that is the type of tone that is set, because having worked in many different school districts, I know that the way that the board speaks, and I have served on boards that were not all kind to each other, the way that the board speaks to each other does set the tone for the whole district. I also think that we need to go, in teacher speak, we're looking at formative assessments as well as informal assessments, right? So informally, these discussions that we're having with our constituents and with our students and with our teachers and with our families is helping to give us some perspective. And formally, the way that we do, as I have mentioned, our equity audits so that we are collecting data on all of our students, so we can understand who we're serving and serving well, and who we're not serving and serving well. And sometimes, when you do an equity audit, you're surprised by the groups that are falling through the cracks. But again, that doesn't always tell the whole story. We need to be listening to the members of those groups and those communities to make sure that their needs are being met in ways that we, as myself in particular, a white woman in her 40s, may not always be able to see when I look out into the space. So I think a well-rounded approach is best, and one where we are modeling that respect and that care for our community.
All right, thank you. Same question, Ms. Anderson.
So I wonder how many of you have seen the movie K-Pop Demon Hunters? That's available on Netflix right now. It's taken over my house. And one of the things that I found most fascinating about watching the interviews of the various voices of the main three in the main huntricks group is that they are so emotional, brought to tears by seeing kimbap animated and watching other people eat their food. Diversity is important. We open, we need to have those mirrors so that people see themselves. We need to have windows so that those who don't have kimbap as their cultural heritage get to learn about it. The diversity that we have in our district is just a microcosm of what we have in our world. And to have students ready when they graduate to take on the challenges of the world, we need to expose them and teach them about that diversity. We need to teach them that it is, and demonstrate embracing all ways of being as both valuable and having something important to contribute. We have to provide a culture of belonging with all the necessary supports that each individual needs to be successful and secure. Food is another great way. When they started implementing chana masala in school lunches, we need to have more of that instead of just pizza and chicken nuggets. All of these things work together to help students feel understood and welcome, and that supports and cultivates feelings of safety, which allow us to address educational issues with fewer distractions.
All right, thank you. The next question, we're going to start with you, Ms. Kelly. You'll have two minutes, and here's that question. "Many North Shore students are served through individualized education programs, or IEPs, 504 plans, which provide accommodations for students with disabilities, or highly-capable language development, or other specialized programs. How will you ensure the district improves outcomes for every student?" You have two minutes.
I'm very passionate about this as a teacher who has served in the classroom and sat in on IEP meetings, many IEP meetings over the years. I think that there are a number of ways that we can, we can support our students. I think one of the ways that we can support our students is through professional development. As someone who was a teacher, I know that not all of my professional development felt like it met the needs of me as a teacher in that moment of my career, which was different from my first year of teaching versus maybe my eighth year of teaching. And one of the things that I noticed when I was sitting in IEP meetings is that not everyone had the same level of education when it came to being able to understand the student and how their behaviors were not necessarily a reflection of their interest in school, but a reflection of their disability. I think that it's important that we are supporting our families and our students and our teachers with the type of education that allows each of us to go into that room and serve our students. I know that for High Cap, and specifically of the three people that are sitting at this table, I have the least experience. High Cap was not a program at any of the schools that I served, but I have been learning so much about it in the months that I have been campaigning, and I am so impressed with what we have been doing. In Washington, we have been leading the state in, as far as equity in High Cap. And I, I think that there's a lot more that we can be doing, but that's going to start, again, with listening and communicating to our families and hearing what they have to say.
All right. Ms. Anderson, same question, two minutes.
So I read The Sum of Us by Heather McGee this summer. It also has an eight-episode podcast, if that's more your speed. And what I walked away from it with was the message that we all do better when we seek to serve the needs of those farthest from justice. Serving our students isn't a zero-sum game, because the choices that we make to help some help others. They can be beneficial for all. For example, we recently moved to inter-reading for curriculum for elementary schools. And that move teaches, which is supported by the science of reading, teaches students phonics, which is the main way that you treat dyslexia in young students. But it also is very supportive of all students learning to read. So we need more of those sorts of choices. We also need to know, when we choose to help those who are furthest from educational justice and provide the supports that they need to students who might not also have diagnoses, we can improve the outcomes for students who have yet to be diagnosed and strengthen the performance of students who may find that they just perform better with those supports. Our recent moves towards integrating High Cap students into general education and the plans to integrate more students with special educate, or special needs into classrooms will present a lot of challenges for both students and staff alike. And I feel that we need to work on our culture as we move into that. We need to look at behavior as an indicator of poor fit and be curious about how integration serves and does not serve various populations, because this is representing a change in education for all students. We need to provide supports to teachers and staff to give each student the right level of challenge and not rely on some populations of students to elevate the performance of others.
All right, thank you. Same question, Ms. Hayes, two minutes.
Thank you. The place you have to start is believing that every child can and should learn, and every child will be a contributing member of society. Then you look at the data, and if you have a gap that doesn't reflect that, so if you don't have representation in your students taking algebra in the eighth grade, or in your highly-capable program, or in your AP or IB classes, then, then you, instead of saying, "Well, that is what it is. Those kids can't learn or don't want to learn," then you start looking into where are the gatekeepers? What are the barriers? And start working to remove them. So you have to come from that belief that they all can learn and they all deserve to learn during the course of the year, and then, then you can look at the data and say, "Who's missing from those classrooms, and how do we make sure that they get there?"
All right, thank you. For this next question, I think each of you have sort of touched on it already, and here's an opportunity to elaborate a bit. Ms. Anderson, we're going to be starting with you. And here's the question. "Funding challenges are ongoing. How will you advocate for fair, sustainable funding while also building community understanding and support for the district's financial priorities and challenges?" You have two minutes.
So I started some of this when I was on the High Cap Parents Council. Every month there, we would undertake to deepen our understanding by having a monthly learning topic. Last February, when the state legislature was undertaking writing their budget for the next two years, I made this our school, made school funding our learning topic and provided resources, links for ways that people could communicate with our local representatives and senators. I believe that many think that the budget cuts are done and don't realize that this, especially, that this is basically ongoing, especially in light of insecure federal funding and the rising costs of everything from construction to insurance to school supplies. We need to make sure that we are providing opportunities for our community to, to address them directly with our concerns and our problems, whether it be through conversations with the board or with the superintendent. The better job we do of making sure that our community is aware of the challenges and the sources of the challenges, especially those upon which they can take action, the better job we can all do in working together to close those gaps, both in convention, by conventional and creative means.
All right, thank you. Same question, Ms. Hayes, two minutes.
Thank you. Well, we're going to continue our work of collaborating with our staff, our PTAs, our students, and our community to advocate for education funding with the state legislature. However, we know that this upcoming session is a non-budget one, and it is unlikely for there to be any increase in funding. In fact, we're going to have to work really hard to make sure that there are no cuts to education funding and no new initiatives that are unfunded. So we're going to rely on our partners. I see so many of you here that we hung out in the halls down in Olympia together, and we will continue that work. And we're going to have to start laying the groundwork for the 2027 legislative session, which will be a budget session, and working with our legislators and continuing to ask the question, "What do you need to be a leader in increasing education funding?"
All right, thank you. Same question, Ms. Kelly, two minutes.
I think that sometimes the community thinks that funds are being mismanaged and doesn't realize that the money that is given from the state is not on the same cycle as the way we need to spend our money in our schools. Oftentimes, the money that was promised does not come, and/or it comes late, and we incur additional late fees and interest fees on top of that because we were unable to pay our bills with the money that was already pre-approved. And then, as both of my, my, I was going to say compatriots, I don't know why that was the word that came to my head, but both of the people running at the table have said, it is, we have budget cuts that are coming from above us that force us to make decisions in our community. And so I think that we have a really, really robust number of committees and groups that are doing amazing work. And I think it's getting the word out to the people that aren't involved at the level of likely every person in this room, so that we can keep the ball rolling in our state legislature, especially, as Sandy noted, when we don't have budgets coming up and we're likely to see cuts. I am new to this, so I don't know that I should name-drop, but I was speaking to one of our senators on Tuesday, and one of the questions I very bluntly asked was, "What are you doing? What is the plan? How, how do I help you to help us?" And frankly, it wasn't a very clear answer that I got, and I am new to this, so I'm going to have to work really hard on how do I get that answer from these people. But I think that in this position, it will be us using our power and our privilege on the board to have those hard conversations with the people at the state level.
Thank you. Moving to the next question, Ms. Hayes, you're going to be up first for this one. "What ideas do you have to improve the physical and social-emotional safety of our students, especially when additional funding may not be available?" You have two minutes.
Thank you so much. So there's this great book that just flashed into my head, and the title of it is Schools Can't Do It Alone. And, and that really is the answer, is we, we can't do this work on our own, and we're going to, we're very dependent on our community partners. Obviously, PTAs is one of them, our foundation. But we also have partnerships with Evergreen Hospital. They provide funding for mental health supports in our schools. And King County has a tax that provides funding, again, for mental health support, so we're going to continue to work with those entities. We have a good working relationship with our local municipalities, our city councils, and our police departments, and we will continue to work positively with all of them, because this is not- this is not work we can do all on our own.
All right, thank you. And over to you, Ms. Kelly, two minutes.
Thanks. I agree with Sandy. I think community partnerships are extremely important when it comes to serving our students. Schools really can't do it alone. I also think, and I am very passionate about, that culture building and being able to create a culture of inclusivity is one of the key factors in schools. As a teacher and as, you know, I moved up in the world of teaching into professional development, my focus was on how do we build cultures in which everyone feels belonging? And I think that likely, if we were to look at it, some of our schools are doing better or some of our classrooms are doing better than others. And that doesn't necessarily mean that there is anyone that is doing it on purpose, but there might be gaps there where we can help support, making sure that there, all of our students are getting the support that they need to feel welcomed and whole. And that support isn't just going to be, you know, the teacher that's right in front of them, but it's also the support staff that supports the teachers and mental health and social services that help to create a really well-rounded program so that students are able to sit down and learn. Yeah.
All right, over to you, Ms. Anderson, and you have two minutes.
We can cultivate a culture of belonging and understanding because when a person feels heard and understood, they tend to reciprocate by working harder for and with the person who understood them. If they feel misunderstood or gaslit about their experiences, they lose faith that the other person has anything good to say or do for them and can shut down in order to protect themselves from further harm or maybe even avoid going to school altogether. One of the saddest things that I saw when I was looking to try and figure out which groups were farthest from educational justice as I was answering a questionnaire, I believe, for the North Shore Discussion Group, was that there is a population of students who answered a survey that they did not believe they had the skills to succeed. We need to make sure that all students believe that they have the skills and the resources that they need to be successful in school. We need to look at behaviors as communication rather than an attitude problem, which I see happen a lot in the secondary level. If we believe that students, if we believe them, students can get curious, and we get curious, sorry, about where the behaviors or the deficits are coming from, then we can actually find the root cause and work towards actually making a true solution to the problem.
All right, thank you. For this next question, we're going to start with you, Ms. Kelly. You'll have two minutes and here's the question. Recent federal executive orders related to education stand in opposition to Washington state law. What are your thoughts on this?
My thoughts on this are that, as I have stated, our students have a constitutional right under the First Amendment to access to information and that if the federal government is not respecting the constitutional rights of our students and our teachers, that we should lean on our state's rights to make sure that we protect those things for our students and our staff. I think that's my whole answer.
Ms. Anderson, your turn, two minutes.
So when I and all of us up here declared candidacy for the school board, we also affirmed part of, affirmed an oath of candidacy and part of it is as follows. I swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington. This supersedes any federal executive orders because we are not beholden to follow them as not members of the executive branch. And thus, we, I believe that we need to follow both the constitutions and the laws as our primary objective. I believe that we're in this tricky time because in general, we have a huge lack of understanding about our country, its history and its governance. We ask more about of this, of immigrants who are trying to become citizens than we ask of ourselves. We also lack knowledge about the rest of the world. My husband could name states when he came, when I first met him, but I couldn't name a single Canadian province. There's a, there's a problem there. When I was a senior in high school studying European history, I learned a quote by George Santiano, which says, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." It is critical that we value and teach our history as it happened and not in a sanitized version. We need to learn, we need to learn it, not because we need to feel guilty about what happened, but because future generations have a responsibility not to repeat their ancestors' mistakes. Public education is critical to this mission and it must not be dismantled, but strengthened.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hayes, two minutes.
Thank you. A legal question, yay. All right, so here's the deal. Executive orders have the binding force of law upon federal agencies only. They do not have a binding force of law on states or local school districts. They are also subject to judicial review and we've had a lot come at us in the last eight or nine months and we are monitoring because most of them are up for judicial review. So we are taking a stance of watching and seeing what's happening and I assure you that North Shore is in compliance with both state and federal law.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the next question and Ms. Anderson, you're going to be first this time. Here's the question. How will you ensure that student voices are heard and valued in shaping district priorities, policies and programs? What structures would you change or create to increase student engagement? You have two minutes.
In part, we hear student voice in surveys and test results, including panorama surveys and SRO surveys, as well as SBA and I-ready test scores. But if students feel unsafe in sharing their true feelings or quit without showing the true extent of their abilities, the result of our efforts will be garbage in, garbage out. We can't make effective policy decisions if we're not getting the true picture of what's happening. We need to make sure that students understand that that is the goal, not the anxiety-inducing ideal of perfection. I'd far rather know that yes, you are struggling, that these things are making it hard for you to go to school than for you to answer, no, I have no problems, and then continue causing you harm. So how do, we, we need to, we need to make sure that we are communicating with students and making sure that they understand that that is the goal. The above ways may be easiest to reach most students, but they are not necessarily the most effective, nor is interviewing students without warning about the topic. We need to find ways that we can reach students and not just the ones who volunteer and say, me, I want to, I want to be on the committee. We need to find the ones that don't want to raise their hands all the time. The ones who are particularly affected by some of these decisions. And we should bring them in to find out what is, we are doing well and what we are not doing well and what helps and what hurts.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes, two minutes.
Thank you. So we have created a student advisory board that is comprised of students from all of our high schools, not necessarily the ASB presidents at those high schools. They are a composite that is reflective of what our district looks like. The superintendent and two board members, because of that OPMA thing, which we can talk about later, will attend the meetings and listen to the students and they drive a lot of our work. We also have board visits to all of our schools during the course of the year, a third of them each year because we have a lot now. And during the course of that visit, we have an opportunity to sit down with students and we've been very clear with the principals that we expect to see a wide diversity of students, ones that are succeeding, ones that are struggling, all of the students. And I'll tell you, it's our favorite part of the job. All of the current board and I wholeheartedly believe that new board members, it's the best part of the work. It's really hearing from students because they are honest and, and great conversations that we get to have with them.
All right, thank you. And next, Ms. Kelly, you have two minutes.
Our students speak to us in many ways. Some of those ways are through the formative assessments that Carson had mentioned and some of those are through informal pathways when we're in their classrooms or in their hallways and some of are on the advisory council. And I'm so excited that that is something that we have in our district. As someone who was a student trustee, who on my very first board and then later a teacher on my second board, and I was going around scrambling to recruit kids to represent the student voice because we didn't have that level of organization supported at our board level. So I, I, I am overjoyed to hear that we have created structures to make sure that our student voices are being heard. I think that as usual, there are probably ways that we can improve that in making sure that our advisory boards for our students are as equitable as possible and making sure that they feel a sense of welcoming and belonging that allows them to speak freely. But I also think that until I am elected and sitting in this seat, I don't have the answers for how we can improve those systems yet because I don't have the bird's eye view that a sitting board member does. But I can say I'm, I'm so excited to be able to sit on a board where students are already built in voices.
All right, thank you. And this will be our last question and we're going to start with Ms. Hayes. And the question is, how would you prioritize visual art education in the district, especially in elementary schools? Two minutes.
Thank you. There are so many well-intentioned laws that have been passed by our state legislature that impact schools, but almost none of them are funded. And it is heartbreaking that they are creating expectations of our community that we will be able to do, to afford all of the things. So as funding increases, we're going to focus on bringing back programs based on what our students and community prioritizes. I will refer you back to question three. I think that was a great list that we got from our students of what we will be focusing on to bring back.
All right, thank you. Ms. Kelly, your turn, two minutes.
I suppose I can't just say ditto at this point, can I? I think that in order for education to be successful, we can't just focus on math and English and that's coming from someone who taught English. We need to make sure that we are also prioritizing the arts and visual arts. And I think the best way to go about that when we are stratified by funding is to make sure that we are hearing our community and our students and the types of things that they're interested in us bringing back and trying to prioritize those, even when there are gaps in funding. It feels like almost every question goes back to funding and how boards' hands are tied in many ways on that. But I think working together as a community, you know, I think every person sitting on the current board and every person that will be sitting on the new board come January would like to see as many of those programs come back as possible. It's just a matter of what can we afford and where's the biggest need or the biggest interest in our community so that our programs are serving the most kids to the best of our abilities.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, same question, two minutes.
So one way that I see that we can help start to solve this is to prioritize that each sixth grader has a minimum of one quarter of art and one quarter of music in their sixth quarter elective wheel. You can't be curious about something that you've had no exposure to. And so in this way, we could make sure that every student had exposure to art from a teacher before they are in charge of choosing their own electives moving forward in middle school and high school. North Shore is extremely lucky and they have a hugely involved volunteer population. They number almost one volunteer per two students. But I don't think that art is the best way to utilize that labor. I was an art docent for one year when it was what I perceived from the easier school and it was also kindergarten only. And what I observed, both watching my students engage in the art docent program and hearing about it through PTA, was that it is inconsistent at best. Some students have great art docents who know a lot about art and teach really interesting lessons and do really creative projects. Others of us might be struggling to do what we, what might be the minimum. Sometimes classes don't have anyone who can volunteer to be an art docent for that class and maybe they have no art docent at all, all year. It also depends on teacher availability. So some teachers will say, hey, come in every month, come in more than once a month. Others might not even give you once a month. That's not a good way to leave creativity. It must be cultivated and guided in all sorts of forms, not just writing. And so I think that we need to work on ways to merge art with education because it becomes more engaging to students that way and more memorable and find a way to incorporate art into elementary, and elementary schedules.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. Now to wrap up, we're going to move to your three-minute closing statements. The candidates have been asked to include their top priorities for the district and what impact they hope to have, to have had by the end of the term. We'll reverse the order from the opening statements and begin with Ms. Kelly. You have three minutes.
My three priorities are making sure that all of our schools are inclusive, welcoming places for our students, for our staff, for our families. And I think that that also means that we are looking at kids as a whole person and not just the data that we are given by their test scores. My second priority is the teachers. As someone who has been a teacher and been in classrooms and schools where I didn't have the support or the funding or the staff to be able to do the things that I knew were best for my kids, I know that keeping good teachers in classrooms, keeping veteran teachers in classrooms where we know we have the best student outcomes means we need to be listening to what our teachers need and being open to meeting those needs wherever we can. And I think my third priority, which will come to no surprise to anyone in this room, is funding. And, and that means, again, as I've already said, making sure that I, as an individual board member, but also as the North Shore School Board, the five of us, which this board has already been stellar at doing, is building relationships both locally and at the state level to make sure that we are able to move the needle on what has been a very long conversation on our regressive tax system that is not meeting the needs of our schools in a state in which we have more than enough money to be taking care of every student in every school and doing it very well. So those are, are my three priorities. I think to say that at the end of my four years to have met, met the goals of those priorities would be quite lofty, but I sure hope that in four years I can say, we've done it. We've, we've done it. But those are the things that I'm, I'm going, that's the lens that I will be looking for. Are we serving all of our students? Are we making sure we're keeping our teachers, our amazing veteran teachers in our classrooms? And are we moving the needle on making sure that our schools are funded because our kids deserve it? Did I answer everything? Might have gone off on a tangent. I think, I seem to be the only person that didn't have prepared statement. So, and now you know exactly who I am off the cuff.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll move to Ms. Hayes and just a reminder that you were asked to include your top priorities for the district and what impact you hope to have had by the end of your term. Three minutes.
Thank you. We have the best in North Shore. And, and if you don't know this, they, the rest of the state, when they say North Shore, they say it like, North Shore, North Shore, North Shore, and I'm now dating myself as in Marcia from the Brady Brunch. So we have the best staff, literally. We had the Washington State Principal of the Year this year. We had the Washington State Teacher of the Year this year. We had the Washington State Paraeducator of the Year this year and the Washington State Secondary Librarian of the Year. So it is an objective fact that we have the best staff. Our students are amazing. They are starting nonprofits, they're starting companies, they're publishing books, they're working to make the world a better place, competing at the state and national level on every topic that you could ever think of. And we have a community that has come here for the schools. We have the most involved community in the state. When I work with people on the state, they're like, what? Like, yeah, no, it's just how we roll. However, we still have work to do. In the last few years, AI has replaced 13% of entry-level jobs that require a college degree. We need to take all of our talent, all of our expertise and energy into this education system that was created in the 19th century. system that was created in the 19th century and make it relevant and beneficial for our students that will see the 22nd. I will continue to advocate for making sure that our students have the skills needed for whatever their future holds.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Anderson, three minutes.
I love that you're getting to hear a diversity of priorities, because that means we're focusing on a lot of good areas and that we will all bring something unique to the board. My first priority is that we need to rebuild our financial reserves and to have a balanced budget. We need to make sure that we maintain the autonomy, autonomy to decide what is important to our schools and community. We do not want to enter into binding conditions with, with the state overseeing our choices, Bellevue recently had to do. We need to plan for future growth in the north end of the district as Snohomish County moves the urban growth line to Highway East, Highway Nine, and make plans to weather a predicted 8% decrease in birth rate in this state and other parts of our district. We need to be creative and strategic about ways that we can acquire land for schools needed to reduce overcrowding, while coming up with new ways of filling smaller schools. Some ideas I have for this are to provide choice programs in smaller schools, or to work with our local state legislators to utilize empty classrooms, such as the project that brought state funds and community partner together to convert empty classrooms and in, at Linwood High School into a mental health and dental offices that are accessible to students. Finally, we need to focus on student mental health. We need to make sure that the counselors that we fund, or that we funded during the pandemic stay, but we also need to make sure that our teachers know how to teach students who have the common mental health issues that they might see in their classrooms, such as autism, ADHD, anxiety, and depression. Over the last 20 years, I've seen how different parenting situations divide us. As a precocious kid, parents struggling with academic pacing or outsized emotions are diminished by someone who's struggling to help their kid learn to read. Or a parent with a kid, with a kid who has some disabilities may be diminished by another whose child's, whose child's struggles are farther from the norm. We divide ourselves by programs and abilities. We try to isolate ourselves to our own kind and only those who share our worldview. Discussion about or support of those with similar struggles is seen as divisive and not to be discussed, as it may be harmful to someone who doesn't fit the same description. Our communities are fractured because we don't fully support each other, and then we are upset when the othered don't want to come and volunteer. "We love you, but this is our school," is a message I've heard more than once. I want to leave you with this one thought. When New Zealand had a mass shooting in March 2015, 2019, sorry, they had thoughts and prayers and outrage at the violence. But as Jacinda Ardern mentioned when she was addressing graduates at Yale University, empathy is nothing without action. And 27 days later, they enacted laws to stop the ability for people to have those kinds of weapons. What if we did something like that before a tragedy happens to mend the damage in our community?
Thank you. All right. Thank you, candidates. How about a round of applause for all of the candidates? Thank you for running for office and for participating in this forum, and thanks to our timers, Abby and Liz, and all the North Shore Council, PTSA volunteers who worked hard, I know, to make tonight happen. And of course, many thanks to all of you for your interest in the school district and these races. Ballots are mailed next week. All the ballots will be out by Friday, the 17th. Election Day is Tuesday, November 4th. Your ballot has to be postmarked no later than November 4th or dropped in a drop box by 8:00 PM on the 4th. Please remember to vote. Remind your family, friends, and neighbors to vote. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Paula, for a wonderful job moderating, and thank, and thank you to our videographer, JP Lumensock, and the staff at North Shore Performing Arts Center. And thank you to the staff at NPAC, our videographer, JP Lumensock, and Element Seven for your support to make this event possible, especially with all of our tech requests. Thank you all for coming tonight. Good night.